Evening, everyone. This is the Elizabeth Township Planning Commission meeting. This is May tenth, twenty twenty-two. Time is seven oh five. We begin with charge for the pledge of allegiance. We have ten. Eighteen, yes, number two.
To comply with the United States of America and the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The question is, May eighteen?
Mr. King. Mr. King. Ms. Watson.
President.
Mr. McEagly. Mr. Vera.
President.
Mr. Luther Reese.
President.
Your family tonight is... And I am here in here.
Okay, um... Uh, next will be the approval of minutes. Does everyone have an opportunity to read them?
Hold the microphone.
Did everyone get the new response since there was one correction? Yeah, okay. Does the... Wait. Any motion to pass a minute?
I'll make that motion absolute.
Mark first. Say your name, all in favor of the guy. All right. Um, moving forward, um, your business. That will be the citizens who come up front. You will get three minutes. Want your three minutes or pop? You will not be allowed to talk anymore.
Hey, can I ask all the board to please pull those microphones a little closer so public can actually hear you? Thank you.
Can you hear me?
That's better, thank you.
Okay, did everyone understand like they said? Can you come forward, state your name? And then you can present what you want to talk about, okay? First up?
Megan McDonough.
Could you give me the state of my address or anything like that first? Um...
It's not on.
No. All right, do you need to state my name already?
Yes.
All right, Megan McDonough. I am the Pennsylvania new director for Food and Water Watch, also a mother in this district, and I would like to talk about the Eric Lee's pad tonight. Actually, I've been in front of these various boards more times than I can probably count at this point. I'm sure you guys could probably figure it for me. So tonight, I just want to read excerpts out of a letter that I was sent by a very good friend of mine, as well as a colleague, to look through what you're going to vote on for that application. So, good afternoon and thank you for considering my comment. My name is Helen Sensky and I'm a lifelong intergenerational resident of Washington, Pennsylvania. I'm also the organizing director at the Center for Coalfield Justice. I'm the fourth generation in my family to live in our small farm in a county. I have no stranger to impacts of oil and gas development in proximity to our homes and our schools. The fossil fuel industry is abstracted from our community, everything from coal, oil, gas, to clean air and water and good health. When industry land agents came to our doors and began to shail boom a decade ago, they promised us visions of a flourishing future. They ensured our safety and promises the new age technology would not impact us or our land as former extractive industries had. Within three years, as I entered high school in two thousand twelve, we began to see extensive state budget cuts to our public schools. As extracurricular opportunities were stripped from us, we could see gas plants high in the sky surrounding our high school. It became clear to me at this point that we had been duped. It wasn't long after that that the kids in my community started getting sick. I lost a friend to a rare childhood cancer due to sarcoma in twenty sixteen. My friend's illness began with a softball site's tumor in the spine of her back. I and others were frightened, and I wondered how we spent so many Friday nights at the sporting events wrapped around each other singing the alma mater without ever noticing it. Leaders of my school tried to comfort us with promises that our friend's illness was extraordinarily rare. By the time I was twenty-three, I had noted these four more young people who were battling this rare cancer. In twenty eighteen, the Pittsburgh Post-Gonzette reported that there were twenty-seven cases of this rare cancer in our communities. It became very clear that something was seriously wrong. Impacted families asked Governor Tom Wolf and their local elected officials not to ban fracking outright, but to merely halt additional permits until a study could be concluded. In twenty nineteen, the state allocated funds to conduct a study to investigate the relationship between sarcoma cancers in young adults and children and oil and gas development. The University of Pittsburgh is actively conducting this study, and I am a member of the external advisory board. Today, there are over thirty cases of young sarcoma in southwest Pennsylvania with a timeline reflective of the fracking movement. This past year, research conducted by Christina Marusik of the National Health Service found that children living near well sites and fracking development had biomarkers in their bodies of harmful chemicals at levels significantly higher than the average American. Had I known what I know now, I would have filed every permit in my own community when I was fifteen. We didn't know, but you do. So, as you vote on this, please consider the pleas of families impacted by these childhood cancers. Consider your children, consider your neighbors, consider your help. I have your contact information and copies of the letter for each of you if you'd like to reach out to her and hear more. And I would ask you, as a mom in this district who's son will be attending the high school next year, for you guys to recommend denial based on the health and safety of my kids as well as the other kids that will be attending that high school. Thank you.
Um, Rich Fest, F-E-S-T?
That's Rich Fest. My name is Rich Fest, and I live here in the community. My son lives at school here. And I have a short message for you guys. In the light of what we've let it was just read and the fact that the state is currently studying the link between these rare childhood cancers and oil and gas development, I ask that the board go to recommend denial of the application based on the majority. And that's all I'm going to say to you guys. Thank you.
Okay, Cindy Christensen?
Cindy Christoffy, hi Kathy. I'm glad you're going to find true. And I guess I really like to say what's so great about our community. I know I have friends that live in Northfield and everything. I've been in my house since I was in eighth grade when my parents bought it. I'm down by the bike trail. That's a wonderful, you know, feature of what we have. I don't know why we don't try to do more to like more promote the bike trail versus oil and gas, this, these fracking, especially by the high school. I mean, when you read this and see what the schools are becoming, we have teachers here now. Why, why do we want to do this? My son had sarcoma back then. He was between middle league world series with a tumor on his leg. And I thought, well, that's why he's still milking sliding into the home base, sliding the bases, playing soccer. I just don't know what we want to do that makes us happy enough, especially by a school. That's all I can say, that's all I can do. If we did this with energy, wouldn't they say, oh, there's not going to be, oh, come that staff is going to be speaking? We found out social justice when they had to speak. Oh, they're getting permits for benzene toiling. And I said, I said to the guy, why did your coworker not say that? Well, I don't know why, but that was after they got that permit or that big meeting. So, I mean, they're going to say, oh, we'll give the kids soccer fields. Oh, where they said it was, you know, it's a terrible place. Oh, we'll give them shirts with our names on it. Do we, I, you know, do we really need that to sell ourselves off to this? I don't know, I think we could have like maybe a Delray community or something down there near the bike trail, people that appreciate clean air, clean water. That's all I'm asking. That's it. All in all, that's it.
Eric Piper?
Hi, my name is Eric Piper, I live in one oh three Teak. This whole process seems, I'm against the well pad. This whole process seems to be rushed. We just got our surveys less than two months ago. We never, we haven't been contacted by the results of our survey. My commissioner, we didn't have an application related to this. I talked to him three weeks ago, there was an application, and all we, all he was able to give me was an Act fourteen notice that wasn't posted on the township's website when it was supposed to twenty-four hours after. So then, all of a sudden, the application seems to come in last minute, and we're voting on it within a week's period of time. And all I ask is that you guys do your due diligence. Doesn't seem like there's a lot at stake here, especially you're putting it right next to a high school. A lot of people in my neighborhood feel the same way. So, I ask that you recommend to the commissioner to move down the well pad. Thank you.
What? I don't remember my name. The way this, this is not, yeah, right.
So, Joelle White Men, some of you remember me, some of you don't. I used to work at the township. Now I work for Food and Water Watch, but I am here as Joelle White Men, the resident. I live at one twenty-six Walnut Circle. And I understand this is a tough decision that has been put on your place. I've been here with you guys before, I know all of you, all most of you. But this is a decision you should not take lightly. I know the planning commission has recommended well pads from Olympus in the past, but this one is a tad different. This one will be directly next to our children's high school. How many of you sitting up here have children and a high school? Almost everyone in this room behind me does. And we are all very concerned as to how this board can even entertain recommending this application beyond their legal obligation to do so. There has been little transparency to the residents on this well pad. I've sent numerous emails, spoken with elected and appointed officials, and I've received either the runaround or vague answers when it comes to this application. In my years working for the township as a resident, transparent, and as a resident, transparency has always been a struggle for this township, and I am not sure why. Especially when it comes to oil and gas. And I've lived it, I've worked here, I know how it goes. Were members of the planning commission, part of the pre-permit conference that was held in March? I know you guys won't answer my questions, but I just, I want to ask that. Because I know the first responders were not. How would you suggest parents in this district go about making sure our children's safety is a top priority for Olympus and this well pad when they didn't even submit a fully formed emergency preparedness plan with their application? These are our children, homes, and businesses that are affected. Do any of you live within a thousand feet of a well pad? Because I will. I love my home, I love my neighbors, I love my school district, and this well pad has been a devastating blow to how I will continue to live my life here. What about the text amendment that was submitted on May second? You don't think it's a strange coincidence that this application came in the very next day? I don't think so, and neither do any of my neighbors. The text amendment would automatically place more safeguards for our community that are in compliance with the municipality's planning code and the PA Oil and Gas Act. And yet, it was decided, or better yet, we were told that the text amendment would be presented a whole month after Olympus's application because this text amendment had zero impact on Olympus's application. This conditional use application should one hundred percent be recommended for denial due to being incomplete. I spoke with two fire chiefs from two different departments. I called one, and I said, were you part of this pre-permit conference? No, that's their jurisdiction. So I called that fire chief. Were you part of the pre-permit conference? No, that's their jurisdiction. So my children, nobody knows whose jurisdiction the high school falls on there. So I'm going to tell them, who do we call? Which fire department? Do we call code enforcement, do we call planning commission, do I call my commissioner? So I just really hope you guys think about all of that.
Jessica Boyd?
Hi, I'm Jessica Boyd. I live in Fox Run, just like Eric and Joelle. I've lived here my whole life. And honestly, if half of what everybody is telling you is even like, there's a chance that somebody can get sick or something can affect our kids, how can this even be on the table to be considered right now? I mean, I would just ask that you please deny this. It makes me so sick to think about this close to schools, to houses, to people who pay taxes. Why is this even an option? There's, there's got to be something better that we can do instead of having a well pad shooting flames up here right outside of our school. I'm sorry, I just think this is a horrible, horrible, something that we should need to be considering. And I really hope that you guys vote to deny this, so that's it.
Scott Taylor?
Evening, everybody. Scott Taylor, three oh four Mohawk Drive. Speaking tonight on behalf of Protect Elizabeth Township. I know you guys, for the most part, know it's not just a listener and engineer, I'm sure do. We are asking for this mission to recommend that the two board commissioners to deny this application as submitted both parts of it in its entirety for the following reasons: mainly incompleteness and missing information. Although not expressly required, our ordinance nine forty-two, section six oh one, B one, does offer, does refer to obtain permits, permissions from the department and other state and federal agencies prior to construction, which means this can go from here to the township, and they can approve it, and these guys don't have a single permit from any other agency, and the township has nothing, no recourse to fall back on because they've already approved it. We've been through this, we've explained this prior hearings. But the only part, the only part of this entire proposal that has been submitted to the PA DDP, both parts that you have in front of you, the only thing that is in front of the DDP right now are the six wells. There is no application to the DDP for the well pad, the pipeline, to interconnect anything else. Nothing. That's as of today, I have a copy of their web, their listing. I get their posts whenever they put them out, their alerts. Hopefully, we'll hear more about that than the, I'm supposed to be getting an engineer's report on completeness of this application. Evidence of this document, titles that have been submitted, they are all titled reports, not permit. If you reference the Huntley, Huntley, Olympus, Plutus, they were all labeled permit package. These are not, these are labeled reports. So that tells you something right there. Trickery of words. If memory serves you correct, the past well sites all had permits available with the application. And I did prove that true after I wrote this brief. They all had their permits, other than wells that were outstanding. The well pads, everything else, had permits in place from the DDP before they come in this order. Ordinance nine forty-two, section six oh three point three. Before seeking to apartment this application, this application, the township and the applicant shall ascertain whether the township first responders have secured adequate information to deal with the potential dangers. As you just heard, none of the fire departments know anything about this. These guys showed you evidence that they sent a letter to the first responders, Blighdale and Greenwood Fire Departments, the day before they sent you this. That's not gaining any information as to how they're going to handle it. How are they going to handle the fact that they have kids? God forbid there's some circumstance up there.
Time's up. Ted Bryce?
Ted Bryce, sixteen forty-five Sealy Drive. I'm also within shouting range of that site. Does the vote have to go through tonight? Shouldn't you consider the facts? Shouldn't you consider the facts before you make a decision? And carefully decide on the facts that are given to you instead of just rushing things? Citizens' comments that I'm making now should be done after the presentation by Olympus is given. Then a more thoughtful set of questions could be asked to be considered for you to consider that you're not going to even hear because once my three minutes is up, I'm done. There's no way I can say anything else. They can say everything they want, you can say, huh, but no one else can have any opinion whatsoever. This is completely backwards. They should be presenting, and then you should be having comments. Other municipalities have had multiple meetings to go through the facts set before them and not make a decision the same day. When did you get all the large binders in front of you? From the timeline I'm hearing, this has been less than two weeks of the season start. I can guarantee you, you have not time to go through those binders that are in front of you with everything else that you're doing and make a wise decision about what's going on. You should be preparing yourself and not just rushing through things. This is the third well pad that is proposed to go in Elizabeth Township. There is not a complete consideration of facts by this township. They just rubber stamp things and let things go through. Ross Craker is also in consideration of a well pad right now, but they're asking questions, and they're not getting answers. And so they're making continuances and making them come back to answer their questions that are set before them, that they don't have the answers to give to them presently. No applications were given for you to this, and then all of a sudden, you are voting on this in a matter of less than two weeks period of time. Things hit the cycle to not even allow people out to consider what the world's going to run here. I know the planning commission's considered well pads before, but this is not the same. When the first well pads came in at Olympus, who was then Huntley and Huntley before they became texts, and then they became Olympus, we're lacking things into what they were submitting, and they are lacking things in what they're submitting now. They hadn't drilled a single well pad when you got the first ones approved. They hadn't done one. They had not done one well anywhere when you did the official first well pad. So here we are in a different environment than we were then. You have more facts in front of you, because if you look at the facts in front of you, what you will see is that there's overturned trucks that are dumping waste, there's blowouts, there are violations. There are things that weren't here the first time we approved well pads because they had a zero track record. Well, now they have a track record, and it's not a very good one. They now have multiple drill sites, and what they have is a bad track record. There is an application in sync with it. Things need to be ordered for you to vote on things. Considerations need to be taken that can't be taken upon by you tonight. You should get more information from them. You should ask questions, you should ask follow-up questions. You should get all the information in front of you, and then make a decision. If they won't get that information to you, then you should deny this.
Fred Vickersen?
Fred Vickersen, two fifty-six Lexington Drive. I'm going to sort out my continuing to stop that call. There's no, absolutely no evidence that any of this, well, this is discussed with schools. What do we do if there's a problem with the school? How do we vacuum our schools? This is in close proximity to the school. I'll just talk. Why I had to say. You were all provided in the document that we submitted that you're not going to hear until June because of the mischief of our solicitors. Included in that is a document that we had cited, and we were told, oh, you have to supply the complete document just to try to jerk us around. There's a document here called Positions for Social Responsibility dated April twenty-two. That identifies over a hundred studies for fracking, gas, and fracking activities that have been to the detriment of the citizens of local municipalities. Elizabeth Ford High School has no air conditioning. Most of the year, they open windows to ventilate the school. So we're going to put a crack pad alongside of a school with open windows for all our kids? My question to you, do you want to provide a legacy by exposing our children to deadly pollutants? Of being willfully responsible for cancers, respiratory disease, heart and lung health problems? You know, I've been told several times in a best, oh, we have to crutch because Olympus Energy will sue us. Well, guess what? Do you want them to see you because you didn't put a well in? Or do you want us to see you for detriment to the health or possible killing of kids?
Okay, um, there was a person to sign in, and I can't read the panel.
They start with an E?
Apologize. My name is Eric Harter, and I work for Mount Larchan Association. We're most known for our mine drainage treatment systems, which we've been actually in contact with Elizabeth Township about cleaning up the Driscoll's discharge that doesn't belong to them. But we do other things. We advocate for cleaner water majority of the time. And in a past job, I actually worked for a competitor, a group called CVC. Some of their members may be here today. Basically, it are going to consulting permitting and projects that have to do with oil and gas or other land service projects in general. So if you've never been to a pad site or been on top of one, they are pretty interesting. That's my job, I was there prior to any land services. And I would be there at the very end of the project to make sure it was in compliance before they got rid of all the permits and kind of type of stuff. So, the amount of trucks that are going to go up, the amount of dust that comes off the site, the amount of herbicide that is sprayed onto the pad itself because they don't want plants to be growing on there. So those are all other issues that people may be concerned about. Mount Larchan also studies the impacts of oil and gas waste, not only the brine water, but the drill cuttings. And we are doing monitoring around some of those facilities. Both are located within the often gaining watershed. One of them is called Max Environmental in Yukon, PA. It's a hazardous waste facility. They accept drill cuttings, process them, bury them, and treat the water that comes out hopefully to a good standard. Another one is called RES. They take the brine water, treat it, send the water back out for another reuse. And it would be great for you guys to meet landowners that have been impacted by whether it's the pipelines, the ore, the HDB ore, the well pads, but also some of the people that are impacted by the waste that's generated by these industries. And I think that really needs to come into play when you talk about the potential for planning for our future, which I think is kind of your job is planning around what you think is best. I also serve on the gap trail, or I'm not here representing them by any means, but in a recent study that we did, every mile generated, whether it was direct, indirect, or induced, eight hundred and eighty thousand dollars. And I'm not aware of how many miles are in Elizabeth Township, but when you look at potential, going to a well pad, seeing what you can do after a well is there compared to a trail town, and the potential that exists there. You won't be able to use the well pad, you will be able to use the trail town for.
Before you leave, one more time, one more time.
Eric, E-R-I-C, Harter, H-A-R-D-E-R.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Now, what we're going to do is, to be fair, we're going to have Olympus do their talk and their presentation, and the individuals who spoke in the beginning, I will give you another three minutes afterwards for any rebuttal, okay?
Anybody wants to sign up?
Yeah, they're going to have to sign up back there, just like what you did at the beginning. Just so I make it fair for everyone. So, let Olympus do their presentation, after the presentation, we'll allow you to talk. Yes, I think that's a good idea. We're going to do two presentations, it will be very quick. I will note, and afterwards, some of the presentations are going to be on the agenda. Only the presenters are going to make a little bit of a time, but we're going to be doing it. it. So next, so do we have any, first of all, engineers, do you like to talk about the lawyer, what, on consolidation plan? Is there issue or finding recommendations?
We do recommend it, just very minor.
Yeah, here you, you don't worry, I can't hear you. You're back with your voice, so you're.
Very minor. Just very minor, I'd recommend it. We recommend it for very final.
Is there any questions with planning? One second, starting from the first one.
This is also part of a condition placed upon the approval for a very expensive frame for a principal structure or an eccentric structure on a lot that has no principal structure. One of the conditions imposed by the town here for once we start the consolidation process presumably here and will also clean up some other issues on the property because the house actually spans the two tax portions.
Okay, any other questions, comments, concerns? Any motion?
Make a motion to approve the lawyer consolidation plan. Here's a comment.
Give me a second.
Second.
Game of second, all favor say aye. Aye. Okay, motion carried. Next is, yeah, Pabot. Subdivision, engineer, you have any comments on your site?
Review the plan that was prepared by General Heals Associates, very similar to the last one of this mine. In fact, correct where it was, and said, obviously, you can bring that one reporting plan, but nothing that you feel hold up.
Will you speak into the microphone? We can't hear you.
There's nothing on this plan that would preclude sack of some minor type of rare orders giving preliminary final review on the subdivision.
We can't hear you guys far enough at all. Not really. Get closer to your mouth.
Is this better?
I don't want you to hear.
Sack of some minor type of rare order.
So we have any other?
Wait, what was that? I couldn't hear that.
He was just saying that there was no other issues and that he said that it's quicker than what we have.
I counted six times already that we can't hear you guys. So let's, let's make sure that that's taken care of. Okay?
Um, it's a two-lux subdivision with very minor comments from the township engineer. I'll make the motion to approve the Pavlock subdivision contingent upon GLH.
Give me a second.
Second.
Game of, all favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carried. Okay, moving forward. Now Olympus.
I've got a question. How much time are we getting?
Harvey, they're allowed to talk as long as they want, because it's on the presentation.
Okay. I don't need the attitude, okay?
Yes, they're allowed.
All right, thank you.
I suspect we'd be subject to a lot of criticism.
Olympus have the right to talk as long as they want. I'm sorry, sorry.
Good evening, again. My name is Blake, just from a Baptist Calum outside council to Olympus Energy and Hyperion Midstream. We're here tonight actually on two related applications. The first applicant, they're adjacent facility. The first application is a conditional use application by Olympus to construct and operate an oil and gas well site known as Eric Lees. The pad and most of the access road are located on property owned by Ronald and Marguerite Lombardo. Part of the access road is on property owned by Richard Everly. The, the access to the site is directly off of Route 51, so we know township roads involved in transportation to and from the pad. The proposal is for a total of six wells. Presentation here in a minute, you'll see this is very similar to some of the previous well pad applications that have been before you. The other component of this is a conditional use application by Hyperion Midstream, which is wholly a subsidiary of Olympus to construct and operate what's known as the Eric Lees Interconnect. The path for this is immediately adjacent to both Eric Lees well pad and upon the Everly property. We use the same access road. The interconnect facility, this is the first one that's been for you, basically facilitates flow of gas from the Eric Lees well pad into the existing equitrans interstate transmission line that traverses the property. Tonight, we'll do what we've done in the past, the civil and site layout issues are going to be presented by Ryan Daly from CEC. But with respect since the interconnect is new for you, we're also going to have Jeremy Burton, who is the vice president of the Siberian Engineering, very likely there, Jeremy, who will provide more detail on the interconnect facility since you haven't seen one of those before. We have several other individuals that may be familiar to you who are here if questions come up about certain aspects of the proposal. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Ryan, who hopefully will be able to successfully protect this over on the wall.
Jamie, you might want to just do the first one when you clap through one.
You guys make up here.
Scott, you get to that.
Are you good?
Thank you.
Can you make that screen larger?
All right, as Blake mentioned, my name is Ryan Daly. I'm a project manager with Civil and Environmental Consultants. I'm going to walk you through the site layout for both these projects and then Jeremy's going to come up and talk a little more about the interconnect facility itself. So to orient yourself with the site for the well pad, if you're familiar with State Route 51, it traverses the left-hand side of this exhibit. Route 48 then it comes up to the right side and then the high school sits up in the top right corner. The properties that Blake mentioned is the Lombardo property, which is this large tract to the center left. And then there's two Everly tracks over here on the right-hand side. All three of those properties are zoned rural residential R1 zoning district. The pad itself sits entirely on the Lombardo property as well as majority of the access road. Due to the topography, a little bit of the access road comes across onto the Everly pieces.
Ryan, what's the total acreage of the parcels?
So the Lombardo property is 187 acres and the Everly properties are 63 acres for the northern one and 32 acres for the southern Everly property. Existing uses at this site include a lot of forested land on the Lombardo property with some meadow areas on top of the hill. Most of the Everly properties are existing meadow fields. Olympus has entered into certain use agreements for all three of these parcels. The colored lines shown on this exhibit represent the applicable setbacks according to the zoning ordinance. So the first setback shown with this magenta line is the 750-foot setback from the edge of the well pad. And it's right tough to tell on the projection, but there are no protective structures within that radius of the well pad. The next setback to show here is this orange line, which may be tough to see right now, but that represents the 1,500-foot setback from the edge of the well pad. In accordance with the ordinance, well pad must be located greater than 1,500 feet from the property line of a property that contains a school. So as I mentioned, first thing, school sits up in the upper right-hand corner. The property line of the, the school call is, my corner is going right now. As you can see, this orange line, 1,500-foot setback does not converge on the school district property. So as I mentioned, there are no protective structures within the 750-foot setback. Just to give you some ideas to what the actual distances are, the nearest ones, I'm going to walk you around the site. So we start up to the north, it's actually off the sheet, but the nearest protective structure to the north is over 1,500 feet away from the edge of the well pad. Heading over to the northwest is actually the closest structure and that's right at 1,000 feet from the edge of the well pad. As we circle around directly to the west, we're approximately 1,300 feet to the nearest protective structure. And as we continue around to the southwest, the actual property owner's residence is approximately 1,950 feet away from the well pad. As we go to the southeast, some of these properties along Route 48 are between 1,800 and 2,300 feet from the well pad. And then as we come up to the northeast, the Everly property, their structures are over 1,500 feet. And then the actual high school itself is over 2,000 feet away from the edge of the well pad.
Ryan, how far is the well pad from the school property line?
So the well pad itself sits 1,730 feet away from the property line.
Okay, the requirement is 1,500, right?
Yes, that's correct. So as Blake mentioned, access is going to come directly off of State Route 51. Olympus has applied to PennDOT for the HFP application there, so that is currently under review with PennDOT. The access road will follow up the hills, up around to the well pad itself. The access road is approximately 3,750 feet long. It'll be roughly 24 foot wide. The pad site, approximately 340 feet by 500 feet, so just a hair smaller than some of the typical Olympus sites. That was mainly due to topography. As is standard practice for Olympus, they will have a two-foot-high curtain burner around the burner of the pad. And then we'll have stormwater BMEs, which I'll discuss later on, various locations around the site to control and manage stormwater. Total disturbance will be approximately 24 acres for this project. And then during operations, specifically drilling and completions, Olympus will have 24/7 security at the site. So we'll have a guard shack that will check people in and out of the site following completions as they move into the production stage. They will have a security fence around the perimeter of the well pad. They're standard six-foot-high with three strand smart wire. And then there'll also be a lock gate down the bottom of the access road that would prevent people from accessing the site. Again, similar to their other pads, as far as lighting is concerned, there won't be any permanent lighting on the well pad. There will be temporary lighting installed during drilling completions when they have active operations going on. And those temporary light plants will be directed inward and downward to the site to reduce glare on off-site properties. The exhibit I have up here is the first of two proposed haul routes. So this proposed haul route comes from Interstate 70, follows Route 51 northbound up to the driveway location. If you're familiar with this area, Route 51 is a divided highway. So vehicles exiting the site need to continue to the north on 51 and then they would turn around and come back south of 51 to get back to I-70. So there are no township roads proposed along this haul route. This section that I have up represents an alternative route for vehicles coming from the north off of Route 43. So in this scenario, again, they would travel south on Route 51. They would have to go past the well pad site to Route 136, make the turnaround there, come back north on 51 in order to enter the site. And then vehicles leaving the site can make the right out and continue on Route 51 north up to, or back to Route 43. And similarly, no township roads are proposed along this haul route. So Olympus hired Acoustical Control to prepare a sound impact assessment for this site, sort of valid on previous projects. They are proposing to place sound walls around the perimeter of the well pad, currently designed to be 24-foot-high sound walls. If you read through the sound impact assessment, you'll see that they do the default ambient sound level of 55 dpa, which is in accordance with the ordinance. The ordinance also allows for a 5 dpa increase over the ambient at night, sound being equivalent of 260 dpa. So as far as acoustical controls, modeling, they model with mitigation and without mitigation, mitigation being the sound walls. So with no mitigation in place, the highest protected decibel level at a receiving structure during completion, which is typically the loudest part of the operations, was only 49 dpa. So even at that, they were still being compliant with the ordinance. However, Olympus is, is committed to installing sound walls to provide additional sound mitigation. And so this, this first exhibit I've shown up here identifies all the receiving properties around the site that Acoustical Control identified sound levels at during different stages.
Sir, sir, you're, you're, that's all the model, right? That's all that is, the model? Is that fine?
No questions?
Yeah.
No questions?
So the exhibit I have shown up now is a contour map that shows the anticipated noise levels around the site. So the darker kind of reddish areas represent higher sound levels. As you move out towards the green, those are lower. Just to hit on a couple of the important receivers.
Ryan, so this, the screen you're showing now, this is during vertical drilling with the sound wall, right?
Yes, that's right. Vertical drilling with sound wall, with 24-foot-high sound walls. So actually, the, the highest receiver sits right here, kind of in this, this yellow shading. And that receiver would be at 42.3 dpa, so in compliance. And that is also the Lombardo. And that is also the Lombardo's house, so the the property owner's house. We also pulled sound levels for the high school, and that's coming out at thirty-nine-point-six DPA, so also in in compliance. This next exhibit I pulled up represents the horizontal drilling stage with twenty-four-foot-high sound walls again. Similarly, the the highest levels are are at the Lombardo house, which we're getting thirty-eight-point-eight DPA there. And then the high school, again, at thirty-six-point-eight DPA. So again, we we maintain compliance during that stage. And then lastly, the completion stage, again, with all the twenty-four-foot-high sound walls. As you can see, the this is typically the stage when you have the loudest noise during operations. Again, the the highest receiver at the Lombardo property, we're getting forty-nine-point-two DPA. And then the high school at forty-eight-point-five DPA. So both of those are actually under the default ambient level in accordance with the ordinance. And then lastly, on the the well pad, just touch touch briefly on schedule. So Olympus plans to begin construction, assuming all approvals are in place, next March, so March of twenty-twenty-three. Drilling will then begin in the fall, so September of twenty-twenty-three, with completions beginning then in early January twenty-twenty-four. And production anticipated to begin April of twenty-twenty-four. Before we move on to the the interconnect site, do the support have any questions on the well pad location or site times? So so Olympus is standing here?
I can't hear you back here, Kathy.
Would you be able to put more sound walls up if the noise gets beyond this range?
So when Olympus installs their sound walls, they use thirty-two-foot-high steel beams, so that will allow them to increase the sound wall heights if necessary. So the plan would be to start with the twenty-four-foot-high walls, simply because they would maintain, we expect them to maintain compliance at that level, but if they needed to, they could add an additional sound wall panel to get them up to thirty-two-foot-high around the pad.
Any else have any questions?
As far as sound concerns, at the nearest structure, you're under the allowable range.
That's correct.
I had a question about the trucks. So you're telling me they're gonna turn around on Route thirty-six and come back northbound?
Y- yes, that's correct.
If they're coming southbound?
Correct.
And then where's the turnaround point? So you're you're telling me they're not utilizing any township roads for those trucks?
Correct. So Olympus works with stall shaper engineering for all their traffic-related items. You know, I I didn't prepare this map, but you know, stall shaper has a lot of experience with preparing colorways and the traffic studies in in the western PA.
Is this site one of, is it a dry gas well like the others? I mean, I may be going, I might have questions on the other panel here.
Anthony probably answered that best, but it looks like he's he's shaking, I guess.
All right, so when we get to the animal, we'll talk. Oh, okay, I mean, if you want to answer that, not mine is.
No, the entire area is a dry gas well.
Okay, so it's the same as the other two sites, correct? Okay, what about the water?
Water sourcing?
Yes.
Nice.
You know, I'm getting ahead of myself here, so I'm sorry.
Hey, the uh, sorry, my name is Anthony. The plan is to pipe everything in, hiring to without trucks.
Okay, so you gotta pipe out of ground, like more than?
Above ground or underground, that depends on the length.
From where? Trucks, where are we talking about? Like, where's it being piped from? Curious.
Yes, Jeremy Burden. So we're looking at a river intake over and forward township.
Oh, in former township, okay.
If everybody could just, while I'm making that presentation, there's a lot of good questions, maybe answers, and then the time to jump back.
Anybody else have any questions to you, Alan?
So now we're gonna move on to the actual interconnect facility. All right, so so this is a similar exhibit to what we saw for the the well pad. Safety yield, the interconnect facility sits on entirely on Everly property. And again, still some rural residential R1, and that happens to be the the sixty-three-acre piece that Everly owns. The existing use, again, mostly open meadow, few trees, likes of the site. Again, the the light blue lines we have shown here represents the five-hundred-foot setback from oil and gas operations. So the interconnect facility falls under the definition of oil and gas operations according to the the ordinance. Real quick, just hitting some distances to protective structures. We start off to the north, we're actually farther away this time, so we're over seven-hundred feet away. As we circle around to the northwest, we get up to fourteen-hundred feet away. These houses are from the west, almost two-thousand feet away. Head down to the southwest, five-hundred feet away. These houses belong to Route forty-eight, again, between fourteen-hundred and nineteen-hundred feet away. And then the closest residence to the northeast, again, is Everly, and that's like thirteen-hundred feet. And again, the the distance to the high school from the edge of the interconnect pad is over eighteen-hundred feet away from this this site. Access will utilize the well pad access road. And then when they get up to the top of the hill, it'll be a little kind of short access road that hops over to the interconnect pad. That'll be about fifteen feet wide, approximately one-hundred-and-seventy feet long. The pad size itself, one-hundred-and-fifty feet wide by two-hundred-and-fifty feet long. Similarly, as to the well pad, we do have stormwater BMPs designed, which I'll touch on the the next exhibit. Total disturbance for this site, including the pipelines connecting into the well pad, is approximately three acres. Security at this site, the pad itself will be fenced in, again, with six-foot-high chain link fencing with free strand smart wire. Lighting at this site, so there'll be no continuous dust-to-dawn lighting here. There will be light fixtures installed, but only used if there are employees on-site, they want it dark outside. So Jeremy will touch more kind of on the the purpose and operations of this site. But the kind of the overarching purpose is to get the gas from the well pad into the existing Equitrans pipeline. So if you can, if you follow this gray line that that runs kind of northeasterly on this sheet, that's like, there's there's actually two pipelines in that right-of-way. There's one twenty-inch Equitrans pipeline, and then there's a twenty-four-inch eastern gas transmission propane line that are that are in that that right-of-way. So I fear I'll be tapping into the Equitrans pipeline to to transfer their gas. Schedule-wise, I'm here, construction will will fall in line with the well pad, so as expected, it'll begin next spring concurrent with the well pad. As far as the mechanical construction on the the interconnect pad itself, that would likely be summer of next year, so the summer of twenty-twenty-three. And then the gas will go online at the same time that the the well pad was, so April of twenty-twenty-four. So this site plan I have shown now just shows both proper, both projects combined, so you have a feel for what the overall scope looks like for both of these applications. Again, real quick, access coming off of Route fifty-one. We do have stormwater BMPs proposed along the access road to control stormwater. So we have a rain guard, an infiltration berm down the lower section. We have a wet pond halfway up the access road, a large infiltration basin that'll capture all the stormwater from from the well pad in the upper portion of the access road. And then on the interconnect facility, since it sits on kind of the opposite side of the hill, we have a separate BMP for that. That would be considered managed release BMP, so that captures and slowly releases stormwater from that site.
Right, so all the ponds and other detention facilities, they're similar to what you would see on any commercial or residential development, right?
That's correct.
And and none of these are holding crack fluid or any anything generated as part of the drilling operation, right?
That's correct, that that's not permitted by DPD to use stormwater ponds for that function. Then lastly, we do have two stockpiles down in support, temporary topsoil as well as permanent soils on the site. So we have one stockpile here, and then another one located along the access road. I think the last thing I wanted to address, we did receive letters from K L H dated today. Just wanna walk through those, a couple of comments real quick. So we'll start with the with the well pad. First comment, what will happen with the three existing gas wells shown on the the well location flats within the subject property? That is all part of the DPD's review of the drill permits. So there's a process, what's is what's, that's known as the area of review. So Olympus will have to perform that review and submit that to the the DPD as part of the drill permit process. That's typically something that's not done until closer to the time of drilling. So that that is a process that will be handled by DPD down the road. Comment number two, as this project exceeds one acre of earth disturbance, final MDS NS permit must come from Allagane County Conservation District. Since this is oil and gas development, it will be issued by the DPD. So we will be submitting the NS permit to the DPD for their review. We consider to provide a copy of that to the township once approved. That was the only, that was the last substantive comment. And then on the the interconnect site, just a similar comment on the the MDS permit requirements. It would go through the DNS permit, go through the DPD as well, so we can provide that permit once once approved. I guess, any other questions on the kind of the the site layout of the the interconnect site? Jeremy's gonna walk through kind of the operations limits.
Yeah, I I just went too far, but it it upset me a little bit. But we had an individual said, kind of, let's see, that took the time to read this, I wanna let that individual know. I spent about twenty-five to thirty-five hours, about thirty hours going through their stuff and all those books you you see here. One of my questions is, the interconnect pad and the well pad, that pipeline's only one-hundred-and-seventy feet long, correct?
Y- yes, it's very short.
Okay, and then at the lower, the lower right corner of the, right there, and that's where it connects to that main pipeline here? What is it, Equitrans or something?
Yes, Equitrans.
Because I didn't see identification for that pipeline.
Any other questions?
Oh, I have one, Kathy. Sorry, why would that bike aren't they so close? Does that create any challenges, give it the age of the pipe or anything like that?
No, I mean, we we, you know, the the closer we can build to those lines, actually, the better, because that reduces the the overall pipeline length that I fear has.
Not a problem creating that close to anything like that?
So so we we do include a buffer, obviously, we have to be outside there right-of-way, which, I don't remember, I can't what the the right-of-way width is there. But we are outside of there right-of-way with all our breeding activities.
Okay, thank you.
Good evening, my name's Jeremy Burden. I'm gonna go through the components of the interconnect site as proposed. And I'm just as reference, all the components as I go through it, these are all in place to deliver the end result of tariff quality gas, which is what Equitrans requires, must deliver into their system. So if I go through each component, I'll kind of explain how that meets the different tariff requirements of transmission quality gas. So on the interconnect site itself, as Ryan mentioned, we're about one-hundred-and-fifty by two-hundred-and-fifty feet from the site footprint standpoint. When we come into the site, and I'll kind of go through these by number order. So starting with number one, it's gonna be the the inlet filtration. So what this does, this runs all the gas through filters, picks up any particulates in the gas. What that's doing is that that gas is then turned around and delivered to your house. It's clean quality gas in terms of particulates. So we'll have horizontal filters in this area. And to kind of go into the middle stage here, this is the dehydration portion. So there's a natural just kind of water vapor that's contained in the gas stream itself. When gas enters your house, it's seven pounds per million water content quality of the gas. So what we're doing in this process here, fully overflowed system to where the gas bypasses the triplane glycol. That kind of captures the the moisture out of the gas stream itself, boils that water off, and then allows the gas to exit that system right there with less than seven-pound gas quality in terms of moisture content. Fully regenerative in terms of the triplane glycol process. From this point here, sorry, the water tank's down here. So any water that we do get, that's kind of drop out from the the gas that enters the filtration system, that's all safely handled via piping, closed loop again from the filters into the water tanks down here. And then we'll have trucks that come in and remove the water. From a frequency standpoint, we're probably about once a month entering the water truck. So really, not a whole lot of water coming out of the site itself by the time it activates our system here. As we move into area four, so the reason why this is all boxed in blue is it's part of our agreement with Equitrans. These are all the components that they're going to operate with their own trained personnel. And this is all per their specs, so the process we're going through here is we have a regulation skid. What that does is that makes sure that the pressure of the gas that's entering their system is regulated to pressure per their requirements. It's gonna measure the gas, so this is essentially just the the transfer custody point in terms of where the volume of gas is moved from our system into their system is measured. And then they have odorization on their system, so their line is fully odorized. That's that same smell that you get in your house when you have the leave the stove on, it's a mercaptan smell that they just get injected at this point here before it gets delivered into their system. And I just, how you had mentioned, our site is located adjacent to the Equitrans system right here. All the, you know, the capital facilities that are part of Equitrans, they're all installed, instructed, operates all by Equitrans. They have their own trained personnel that are going through and doing all that, any kind of interaction with their own facilities at that point. So this is a very standard system that you'll see in a lot of interconnect facilities, but this is how each one of those components treat that gas to make a tariff quality, we're not trying to fix it. I think the questions, oh, and we have a representative pictures, just to kind of visualize it, I apologize if I'm not very clear up here. This building right here, this is the meter building, so it's an enclosed building. The actual structure portion, like you see, there's about ten feet tall. We have that all prefabricated off-site, there's a lot of actual components inside of that because of all the the measurement. It's just a very technical process in that. I apologize for the clarity of this one. This is the the dehydration process, that's that tower that I was telling you about with the triplane. This is the dehydration process. That's that tower that I was telling you about with the triplane glycol. Gas enters from the bottom, transferred to the triplane glycol, that's just removing that moisture content out of the gas stream. And then, you can't see on this picture, it's regeneration system, that boils off the water and recycled glycol back to the system again.
Jeremy, what are the points of the meter structure and the dehydration?
Yep, so the meter structure itself, like I said, this is about a 10-foot building, just based on the elevation here. Total height between 12 and 15 feet based on the foundation that is put on. The towers themselves are approximately 30, 35 feet in nature. Here's another, this is just looking from a different angle. This is again that meter building right there. This is your regulation that I'm talking to you about. Flow control valves, those are all controlled by Equitrans themselves, making sure they can regulate pressure. They can see what kind of pressure deployed that are coming to the system. And then this is just a communications building. Everything that we do out on site is completely monitored 24/7 via remote system. That allows, you know, both our team and the Equitrans team to remotely see everything that's going on on site. It allows us to remotely monitor pressures, flows, volumes, and then from an emergency response standpoint, we can isolate actually the site itself remotely.
Any questions on the general operations of the site that you put on? All right, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
At this point, that's all we have, although again, it's part of our main presentation, but we do have other individuals here with questions coming up.
So no one else from your team who's going to be coming up to talk?
No, I mean, we have individuals here from operations and permitting, if the board does have any further questions.
Question about the emergency evacuation, something happened. Is there something, you know, where protocol will be given to say about schools and other locations in case something would happen? And what fire department would they?
I believe there are two fire departments, oh, I'm sorry, Kim Price, because Olympus IRG, I think, for communications for the company. There are two fire departments that services this location. They have been communicated to via letter, but as per our traditional way of communicating with our first responders in this area and in other areas, we do offer the opportunity to do emergency response training with them, sorry. We do offer the opportunity to do emergency response training with them on a regular basis annually, but also for every site that we develop. So once the site is approved and we're down that track, down that pathway, we'll have the opportunity to do some Olympus-led training with them. And at that time, we would be able to address any emergency response concerns that they may have.
I don't think you mentioned which fire departments did you, what were the two?
I'm not sure, Kathy, which two it is. I know that there are three now in Olympus downtown, it's in Saladin. I'm not confident to say off the top of my head which two. And they could certainly be included in those communications moving forward, for sure. Yes, and they're not a department I think that we've communicated with in the past, but we're more than happy to add them to any communications around here, please, moving forward. We'll make a point to do that.
Anybody else have questions? Thank you. All right, we're going to, at this point.
I have a, how, probably for C E C. You have some drawings, you weren't part of the presentation.
So, can I look at a bigger, real quick, just a second? Okay, yes, so the exhibit that he's referring to is an alternatives analysis that we prepared as part of the joint permit application that was submitted to the DEP and the Army Corps for stream impacts associated with the access road. As part of that permit process, we have to show the DEP, you know, why we needed to impact the stream the way we did. So as part of that, we perform an alternatives analysis that looks at different options for getting to the site without crossing a stream. If you read the document right ahead of those figures, we narrate impacts such as steep slopes, impacts to coal seam, issues with, not issues, but encroachments on adjacent property owners. All those things were considered when we selected the access road alignment. So those figures you're looking at are just justification for the alternative analysis that we provided to the DEP.
So those would not be?
Those would not be constructed, correct? Yeah, those are simply options that we evaluated as part of the design for the site.
The access that you will be using is their existing drive.
Correct, so coming off of my, well, the.
Yeah, it's coming off of 51, correct?
Correct, well, I'll pull up.
The way I read it seemed like it was the actual driveway that you'll be using, the existing driveway instead.
Yes, that's correct. So the existing driveway comes, I'll try to not be too shady. Comes up here and then loops around up to their existing residence. The proposed access road to the well pad is going to utilize the same entrance off of Route 51. But as we come up the hill, we cross over a stream and then up the other side of the valley. So there'll actually be a pull-up for the landowner to get back up onto his driveway there. And so the security gate that I mentioned earlier will be located just past that landowner's driveway.
I don't know if you can answer this or not. You're proposing six wellheads. Is there any future wellheads that you might be considering at this point?
Morally proposing the six wellheads right now. The township protocol is that they can come back in for additional application if we choose to do additional wells beyond the six.
I believe you come back to us as well.
Correct, correct, safe process.
Do I have any other questions? Okay, at this time, we will take the individuals who signed up again to talk. I'm going to make it a talking phone, so forgive me. Jasmine?
Hi, my name's Jasmine Kanchak. I live in the 124 Long Island Circle, so I will be affected by all this stuff going on. And I'm not the next one to frack you by no means, so really I just have one concern is the safety of our kids. Number one, the roads, no township roads will be used, but 51 is a main road. I have another kid and one will be driving in a couple of years. 51's not the safest road, there's accidents every day, there's fatal accidents. So my mother lives in Rush Drive, that is like a great dumb road. These roads are going to be used by all of us. I drive 51 every day. These trucks cannot stop easily, so I feel like our accidents will increase with that road. That is, you know, who knows what these trucks are carrying? I mean, this is just not a good idea. So my daughter will be driving in two years, the thought of her driving on 51, these trucks is terrifying. So, I'm sorry about that. So this is not okay. You know, again, I know nothing about fracking. Everything that they said was blown on my head, you know, but again, our schools, our kids already have Alice girls. So we're already worried about school shootings. They have so much on their plates, so now they're going to have another emergency plan that they have to follow in case something happens. That's not fair. That is not fair for our kids. So now we have this to worry about. So not only do we have to worry about the school shootings, everything else, now an emergency plan in case something could blow up. That's not fair. That is not fair to our kids, so we have to do better. You know, we have no air in our schools. These windows are open. You know, I don't know these chemicals. Nobody knows for a fact. Can you tell me for a fact that this will not affect our kids? If you can with 100% certainty, then maybe you have a point. If you cannot tell me with 100% certainty that our kids' health and safety will not be affected, then you move along with your plan. But if you cannot tell me that right now, I mean, can you guarantee me that nothing will happen at my school? Can anybody answer? Are they allowed to answer questions? Okay, so you cannot guarantee me that. This should not be an option. If you cannot tell me with 100% certainty, nothing will happen in my school. I have two children here and I live close, and that is not fair for me, my children, for this community.
All right, so I am sure that there is a.
Oh, first, I mean.
Sorry. There's quite a few things obviously to address here. Number one, he is with three different gas transmission lines on that property already and an interconnect. What's the blast radius of those? What's the blast radius of the transmission lines on that property with an interconnect, a proposed interconnect? Does anybody have? Because that seems to be the problem here, is that these folks here, they look at those maps and they see a building. I look at those maps and I see my son. I see putting my son, their sons, their daughters, every parent in this room in that building. And having to trust a company who has already handed the table with numerous violations in numerous municipalities. I've got over a dozen written here, just like the roads you talked about, Mark. I've got a dozen violations that they didn't adhere to the roadway agreement that they had last time. That there were times that they were off of those roads. We've got a multitude of DEP violations. No one here can guarantee these kids. And I know we're parents, we're all parents here, Kathy, you're a parent, Mark, you're a parent. You know how it is for us moms, you know how it is for every parent in this room. I look at mine too, right here, and I see every step. I see every day that I have been with these kids their entire lives. They've never been apart from me. And I cannot in good conscience stick them in that building next to this. There's no way. No one can guarantee the things that I've read in that letter to you won't happen to mine. So for the parents in this room, I guess the question is, what can we do now? Do we let them go forward or do we fight? I asked the question, I didn't ask anybody a question, so I was just asking them the question. So the question here for you guys is for the parents here that want to fight and want to make sure that our kids are okay, are you guys going to help us do that?
We shouldn't have to fight.
Because you can help us do that. It's in the ordinance that you guys have to take the health, safety, and welfare of our kids and this community into effect. And anything that you cite, actually according to the ordinance, has to have the least impact possible, the least negative impact possible. This is not the least. This is the most. This is right next to our kids. So I'm asking you to stand with us, parents, and fight back. Because if there's anything that myself and my colleagues in this room have proved, is that they are not too big to fall and we can beat them. I promise you that and I'll be right there.
Scott Taylor through Forum Mohawk Drive. Well, these guys just proved everything I said at the beginning. The only thing they had from the DEP are six wells, nothing else. You guys all asked questions that should have had answers here, right now. Not later, not, oh, we'll go talk to the school, we'll go talk to the fire departments, which were Blind Hill Station and Red Oak Station, by the way, the letter's in your books, if you read them. Those departments are on the other side of the township. First responders to this is going to be the borough of Elizabeth in Blaine Hill. If they had the time to take to talk to these people, they would know that. As Megan just said, for job number one for this municipality, it starts right here, health, safety, welfare of the citizens. Least impact possible. We missed all that the first two rounds with these guys. We're sure as hell not going to miss it this time. To clarify my opening statements, we are requesting recommendation to the Board of Commissioners to deny both applications as presented and have Olympus resubmit when a full plan and permits are all available, available, to answer all of these questions. You guys should not have to ask any questions, period. The only plan presented to the state DEP again is the six wells. I take that back. There is a water recollection. So that little bridge is going to cross that string. They can't do anything past that until they get the DEP's permission to cross that little string. So any of this can change. Once it goes to the DEP, once it goes to the DEP after you guys get a permission, the township has absolutely no recourse. You guys have the legal ability to stop right now by offering a recommendation that is, applications being denied, come back when you have a full plan and all applications and permits in place. Thank you.
Trey Baker, it was 2:56 seconds in drive. Just have a couple more points I'd like to make. They're talking about they're going to come off 51 with their access. And most of you who've lived in this area, anyone that could find though, we have a medium strip down this section of the road. The reason that was put in, because that section of the road, we had so many accidents and young people in particular were killed. It used to be every couple of years, somebody from the high, one of the kids from the high school were killed on that road. We're going to put all these trucks on that road and they're going to have to slow down and make a right curve. You've got people coming down that, they're all speeding. We're going to have, we're going to have several accidents, because we still have accidents in that area. All you're going to do is put more trucks out there and cause more accidents because there's not enough third lane for them to get off on to turn in. I don't care who did the study, what kind of experience they have, they screwed up. No, they can beat. Ask the people who went steering. They should have been up there and started listening to what the citizens had to say. Investigate their history and turn it back, of course, their appeal is. They're going to, they're going to cost the municipality a lot of money by this. They think they're going to put up money at it, the municipality's going to go away. One of the things that was pointed out there is their compliance record with the DEP is eight times the average for the industry. They are the worst, I'm sorry, they have the worst compliance record in the state. Is this what we want? We want the worst coming into our municipality and putting more wells in? Again, I ask you to do a trade for the citizens and for our children, deny this application.
Sandy? Sandra Hearn, one five six Brown Street, Elizabeth. I have a list. I do not have the parcel numbers for the well pads. Um, so when I came to the meeting, we didn't have any. I, I just see what's on the wall. I did not see this on the township website. I didn't see this meeting advertised in the paper, the topic of the meeting, the agenda. Other communities do do this, I've been following these. The information was not provided in a hard copy or a map to the people who are present tonight of the pipelines for the well pad or the parcels. There's the work on Google Shield today related to effort cans and the pipeline, the internet. I see people are already working there, I don't hope it's permitted. As pointed out, there is no air conditioning in the classrooms at the high school. The windows will be open. There's going to be, there might just be noise, there'll be smell, vibration, dirt from construction. Sun in the afternoon comes from the west. It is roasting, especially on the second floor. It is absolutely awful. It's slightly more than fifteen, seventeen hundred feet from the well pad in high school, but nineteen hundred feet to the property owners. That's the same situation as the McCall property. Well, I think the property owners further away than high school. Uh, the distance to the night you studied, I don't know if that was included in the school district property. How many feet do each of you live from a well pad? Where do your students, where do your children go to school? Near a well pad, each of you? They don't have the answer I'm asking, not you, people sitting there. Uh, where are school district officials? Shouldn't they be here? Were they invited? Did they refuse to come? I think you should recommend the school district be involved with the parents and discuss this well pad. Where does the water come from? Or what is the distance from the Mullen River to that well pad and how's it going to get there? Will there be water impoundments as with the McCall site? I haven't seen that yet, so I'm part of this application. Should all the members be here tonight? Shouldn't five people be here instead of just three? Recommend this to the commissioners. I would hope that you would take time and ask at another meeting for more people to gather more information. And I, I think you should hold off on recommending this. Thank you.
Bill Piper, seven fourteen Clark Street. Based on a couple comments I hear, heard here tonight, I have a comment of my own. During the Normberg trials, a lot of men on trial claimed I was only following orders. I guess they hoped it would absolve them. I suppose today's equivalent is, with just some typographic layers, I think everything's fine. And I'm good with it depending on the engineering report. Their excuses didn't carry the day in nineteen forty-five and your deflections won't today.
Ken?
Ken Rice. So, um, Blaine Hill and Fort Worth Township as it comes out here should be considered as places of high need to be talked about by the fire department. Yet that's the last place that they're considering. Because this is the kind of thing that they come to the township with. They're not coming, looking at any needs that the township may have. They're a hundred percent about the needs that the company has. Well, it can be the cheapest way to get this done. How can I be as close to these pipelines as possible so I don't have to spend the money to, to go away from them? What is it that we can do for sand haul truck rods? What is it that can be the cheapest for us? And I don't care about Elizabeth Township. And that's not how they should be. They should be good neighbors, they should be worried about what's best for us and if any other track record, that they don't care about us. They don't care about any of us. And now we're talking about our kids. That little stream that's being crossed over ends up being a little stream that goes behind my house. And my dog goes down to drink soon all the time. Well, I'm gonna be taking a different path now. I'm not gonna have my dog coming down there because of everything that's going on here. And I'm worried about my dog. Not to mention the kids. I mean, this is, this is a level that is much higher than any of the others that you looked at. When you looked at these stuff, when you approved this stuff, it was back sitting in the other part of the township and deemed it as far away and didn't have any problems too. This is central to what's going on. It has major impacts. And you said it all when you said at the end of their presentation, is that it? You know there's more questions. You know that you need more information. You know that there's more that should be provided to you and isn't. I've been to these, they know that they're in these, they wish I'd stopped coming to these. But every time I cut the bees, they're a lot longer than my western eye. This is the thinnest presentation ever presented to you and this has the most amount of complex pieces to it. Why do we have this interconnect that we have with all of these different pieces when they're not at the other two well sites? Is this gas that's dry, so dry that we have to have all this to get water out of? Why is there differences between this and other things? How hot is that stuff? What is this shop like on that stuff? How often do things like that break? How many different of these do you have actually built before in your facilities? And how well is that going down? There, there are a myriad of questions that are before you here that you know are there based upon when you say, is that it? And the reality is, you don't have answers. And the answers are, we're gonna use a stream, we're gonna use a river somewhere in Fort Worth Township. Do they have all the access and all the different landowners to get that from there to there? Are all those in places? Are all the DEP presentations already done? We have a four, before, um, pen dot now pending the charter. They don't even have that. There are people who died on route four U on the interconnect between Round Hill Road, trying to try to cross over 51 and getting smacked and killed. And now we're having a whole bunch of trucks coming down and doing more. And what happens when these whole bunch of trucks are a whole lot more bunch of trucks? Because the water route that they're talking about is just some theory and error and it has nothing behind it. And they'll say, you know what, we're just bringing trucks of water. Don't worry, it's not on township roads. We'll just kill everyone on 51. There's so many problems with this. So many problems beyond what they did before, that you really have to go ahead and get more answers or deny this for you.
Eric Ketcher, one oh five Maple Circle. First question is, can you sit up square? Please? Very disrespectful. Can you do something to say that has- Yeah, yeah, I'm gonna say it. Can you not interrupt? Okay, it's my time. Your time is a privilege. So is your position. Okay? Watch yourself. Radio two two three. What you guys playing with radio two two three? And how are you gonna control it? Cecil Township, right down the road. Kid's got brain cancer from it. What are you gonna do about that? I wanna see the details. This presentation, irresponsible of everybody here. This should be blasted on all the walls so we're not straining our necks. Where's the hard copies? We want copies of all these presentations. Are we gonna get those? It's a yes or no question?
No.
I'm waiting. Are we giving copies of all the presentations, the full presentations? Okay. Have you guys all up here reviewed every single page of these books? Have you read through it?
I have.
Okay, it's pretty obvious that you haven't, based on the general questions that you asked. You guys asked no specific questions. You haven't done your work, you haven't done your research. You have, you have lots of resources here. About your gas filtration, to think as I haven't been a filtration expert. Your horizontal filters, what are they? And what micron? I'm asking. Twenty-five fifty micron. That's what you filter oil with, motor oil. Frack water has to be filtered and gassed at a sub-micron level. So all you're doing is allowing poison everywhere. Poison, kids, children, dogs, pets, you. You guys need to be a lot more responsible. That's my message. Cause you're disappointing all your villagers here. So step up your game. That's what I ask. Step up your game, do your homework, do your research, and ask much more specific questions. And for the last time, can you please sit up square? You know, we, we'll hold you guys responsible, that's okay. We're comfortable with that. And you guys need to do your homework. You're supposed to protect the citizens here. Okay, and our children. Thank you.
Betsy Piper? Betsy? My name's Betsy Piper. Um, I just have a couple comments. Um, like some other people in the audience, I would like to know where the water is coming from. Because they are putting another well pad, trying to put another well pad in Ross River and they're going to take water from York where we already have a pump station. So they're already taking more water from the township. So I'm just wondering where they're getting this water. Um, also, one of the gentlemen said that the lights at the facility will only be on, they won't be on at night if they're not working. Well, what if there's an accident at night? Who will be there to call in the cavalry to take care of the accident if nobody is on the plant? That's what the man said. At night, when nobody's working, the lights will be out. So who will be there? He also mentioned something about clean gas. I see now that it's going into a pipeline that's already established. So that's not gonna benefit the township at all. So I'd like to know what this whole enterprise brings to the township. What is the benefit to the township to have more fracking pads here? Thank you.
Richard?
B.
I'd like to tell you that I have a new report.
First of all, your name is-
Uh, my name is Richard Teague, guys. I live over in the neighborhood. I'd like to tell you that I have a new report. I'm the holder of control in the inspector's organ in the condition of fourteen years. I'm qualified in the PD, uh, PTs under S and T C C one A qualification. I know a whole lot of stuff about pipe welding and all that stuff, even about hot pads. The one question you were asking, how dangerous was the pipe? And how do you think, do you guys plan on doing a hot pad? Do you plan on losing the company actually doing the connection to the line? And you love that, you're gonna be good. But what is the blast radius? It's very distracting. You guys don't even have that, even if I know, tells you that they're not ready. And that's the most dangerous one, the dangerous thing you do on a pipeline. I had the privilege of working with newer inspectors on and off pipelines, off and off sites. I worked with someone else that came off the pipeline and, uh, oil gassed it. And it's a small community, people talk, I know. This is why I'm here about this shit. It's, the fact that you guys don't even mention any of that tells me that you are trying to take the, the chance of something actually going wrong. Pipeline blow up, especially the new ones you guys are putting in there. You guys are planning, they all were being inspected by independent company? And who's actually doing the work? And the people actually doing the happen itself? Who cares if it's a hundred seventy feet away? That doesn't matter, it's two hundred feet away. It's the action that happened that matters. Well, three main lines, the twenty inch lines, you guys realize how bad it could be if something actually does go wrong? Is there any oversight on the site? And you're talking about two applications. I don't understand, you know, you putting the interchange right next to the well pad. What happens if you put these two sites side by side and it's happening? What is it, what is the chance that something go wrong? And the fire department don't even know about it? Well, they gotta rescue people. I know what the blast radius is. I know how the interest can be. I've worked with guys that worked on sites that blew up and people died from it. And I can share any walk-in information with any guy, so all you gotta do is just ask. And I got records of my qualifications in this field. You guys expect that, do you? I just can't play my hand. I don't know how the dangers that should be happening. And the other question is, did you just get your reporting, engineer report from them today? Do you wanna understand?
To them today.
To you today, right? Now that's what you called the application, which the application should've been accepted. You didn't have time to pull it, you. Hey, all of you, the fact that you're doing, the people doing hard work should be at part of it. So you guys are asking the question is a problem. This, I know why you got up here and I know you're just playing games with the system. All you're doing is only trying to show up today to do this.
Eric Piper?
So, Eric Piper, one oh three T. I want to thank the solicitor for allowing me the privilege to, uh, talk to you guys today. If it walks like a duck and it sounds like a duck, it's a duck. This is crazy. Why are we even entertaining this? They don't even have all the required information that they should have. We're putting this right next to a school. You can't guarantee that my kids, you can spend twenty-five, thirty hours looking at this, you can't guarantee my kid aren't even sick from this. They can't guarantee it either. You know why? Because we're human beings and things happen. They don't even know what the blast radius is. Like, why are we even entertaining this? This is crazy. Where are the other two board members? Where's our solicitor? Like, what is going on? Seriously? I don't come to these meetings. I don't come to these meetings. I don't know you guys from anything. But this, I am totally unimpressed, unimpressed with what they put together and they're gonna put it right next to a school. And they should be embarrassed by what they put together and presented to you and told us. It's embarrassing.
Eric Carter? Eric Carter?
Uh, Eric Carter. I actually don't live up here, quite surprised, but, uh, I would- when we do look for a new place, it will be within a school district that cares for their children. A lot of people are gonna be moving to rural communities. Uh, and most of them are young enough to know about the impacts of unconventional drilling and what could happen. So again, what is the blast radius of the pipeline that's already there? The interconnect, the well pad, all that stuff? That could summarize this whole meeting and to end it right now, if they would say two thousand feet. That would be an easy answer for you guys, I feel. Their presentation was much more impressive in other townships and I think they should've done a better job. I don't think they provided you enough information to make a decision. Did you guys do construction oak modeling? After construction, what activities can take place? Talking about potential at the well site, what else can be done there? Uh, the shut-off valve? So if there is an explosion right by their pad, how far away are the shut-off valves on that E T line? Basically, how long does it take to, to shut that valve off? And where are those specialized teams that need to come here for a pipeline accident or another incident comparable to the Beaver Run where they had to bring in, I mean, they called it a specialized kill, that's the, the well team, so that they had to bring them in from out of state to be able to perform that. So how long will that take if there is an accident? Uh, I know they had well pads in the past. They could've done noise monitoring instead of just providing us a model. They could've provided us actual data from other well sites. What actually changes when added at eight feet on top of the point four? That's all information that you guys really need. Question for you guys. Are violations, issues of non-compliance that have been brought in with compliance or outstanding non-compliance? Are those issues taken into account on your decision? And personally, I think they should be. Uh, you've heard a lot about their history, their non-compliance history, violations. Somewhere in the five hundred. Uh, I think most of those partly have to do with erosion sediment control. Uh, and that's a scary thing because landslides, slips, or mass waste thing happens when you get an engineered slope on a very steep slope. So all these issues, uh, they know about, they can present on, uh, but they're not doing it for some reason. And they did at other township meetings, so why is it, why is it changed? Why are they, uh, drilling this pad during the school? If our children will be there in summer, why don't they shift their operations? Uh, likely an accident's gonna happen when the drilling is happening. So unfortunately that, why are they shifting their operations?
Joel Whitman, one twenty-six, Maple Circle. Not gonna yell at you guys, um, I just wanna circle back to one of my original points, uh, the fire departments. the fire departments. Mark and Kathy, you guys are the only two that are probably even going to listen to any of this stuff. And what we're saying here as parents and residents, you know, we work together, you guys know me. I live in Fox Run. I can walk within five minutes to the high school. Blaine Hill and Central service my house if there's an emergency. So why do they not service the high school? You know, all these other fire departments, Forward, the Borough, Green Oak, they don't service me, but those are all the ones we're talking about. But the two that are closest to my residence, and I'm so close to the high school, are included in this. And I have written proof of that. I've spoken to both of those fire chiefs who you guys know I know. And then 51, I own a business in Smithville, I travel 51 twice a day, to and from, Smithville, back and forth. There's a proposed well pad happening over in Rushdriver. They're using 51, so now we're adding more truck traffic. So on top of all the concerns that everybody has about the safety, the health, everything, just... You guys have to look at this. This is not thought out at all, this emergency plan. There's no reason today we should be even discussing an emergency plan. And that's why I agree, we really hope you're listening to these people, Kathy. I mean, you guys are holding the cards here and we're trying to give them to you. So that's all, I'm not up here yow or basher, I just really listen to us, please.
I think we have a lot to think about. Amy, Mark, I think we should wait until next month.
Absolutely.
I agree with a lot of you. I agree that we need more information from Olympus. I think Olympus should take the notes. And notably next month, you can answer a lot of these questions that these people brought to you. We too would like to have those answered. And I have to admit, this was a little short, which it hadn't passed. So a little bit more detail, I think, would be in order here. So I think this should be taken until next month.
Commissioners have to make a decision.
Mark, we're good? We're good to have this taken until next month? We're officially concerned.